I like to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February 27th, 2023. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
And Ms. Fostick.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to testify, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next board meeting will be held on March 20th. We have three board salutes tonight. Ms. Demming.
Illinois Principal Association Reaching Out and Building Bridges Award. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley Principal Jason Stipp on being named the DuPage Region Reaching Out and Building Bridges Award winner. The Illinois Principal Association recognizes a principal or assistant principal and an agency, association, or community member displaying an outstanding effort in creating partnerships between schools, principals, associations, and organizations for the betterment of all. Congratulations, Principal Stipp, on this stellar achievement.
Mr. Carubus.
Mr. Rising.
Oh, you're switching. Oh, okay.
We wanted to throw you off.
Tricky.
Wabonzi Valley Science Teacher selected as a NASA JPL Solar System Ambassador. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley Science Teacher Stephanie Rybka for being selected to the NASA Jet Propulsion Laboratory Solar System Ambassador Program. The program is a public engagement effort that collaborates with motivated volunteers across the nation to communicate the science and excitement of NASA's space exploration missions and discoveries with the people in their communities. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Ms. Jane.
Nikwa Valley Student Wins State in Two Speech Categories. The board salutes Nikwa Valley Senior Luke Fostick for achieving top honors in both impromptu and extemporaneous categories at the Illinois High School Association Speech State Final. Two second-place finishes went to Nikwa Valley Seniors, JV Kroll in Oratorical Declamation, and Aditi Vadakat in the Special Occasion Speaking. Nikwa Valley placed fourth overall as a team tying with Hinsdale Central. Congratulations for a job well done.
Quite an accomplishment. All right, our next topic is a student representative report by Saad Karishi from Matia Valley High School. Hi, Saad.
Hello. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Saad Karishi, and I'm the Executive Board Representative for the class of 2023, and I'm very excited to be here with you all tonight. First up, Matia Valley hosted the annual elective fair in early January to assist with elective options for the upcoming school year. Eighth-grade open house was hosted on January 18th, where incoming students were welcomed into where they'll be spending the next four years of their academic careers. Winter scenes in the Orcasus Showcase were highlighted in our Black Box and Auditorium. Both events were performed by our very talented Mustangs and were a true pleasure to see. Young Hearts for Life hosted free EKG scans for more than 1,600 students. Twelve students will receive a follow-up visit based on their scans. Another successful winter spirit week was hosted with fun themes such as Anything But A Backpack Day and Pyjama Day. The spirit weekend ended with two packed assemblies in which there were amazing amounts of student and staff participation. Matia Valley was able to honor and recognize 382 seniors as Indian Prairie Scholars. These students have met the requirement of maintaining a 3.6 GPA over the last seven semesters. Over 120 students participated in MLK's Day of Service. The Day of Services went students gather to give back to their community. Students traveled to Loaves and Fishes, the Aurora Library, and the Aurora Interfaith Food Pantry. Students also went to the schools that feed into Matia such as Granger, Brooks, and Nancy Young. Matia Valley's prom will now be held at the Matrix Club in Naperville. This decision was made to support local businesses and shorten the drive for students. Select music ensembles from Matia, Nikwa, and Wabonzi participated in the 204 Music Organizational Festival held at Nikwa Valley. This ensemble performed for each other and received a clinic from the music directors at Almhurst College, Western Illinois University, and the University of Illinois. The University of Illinois Wind Symphony also traveled from Champagne Urbana to give a full performance and participate with the students during the clinic sessions. The Scholastic Art Competition is a national competition that recognizes the exceptional vision of our nation's youth and provides an opportunity for students to be awarded for their creative talents. Matia Valley is proud to announce that 14 artists from Matia Valley have received scholastic honors and their work displayed on the exhibit at Downers Grove North High School. The artwork of the three gold key winners are Junamary, Harry Ryu, and Miranda Zhang. They will move on to the National Scholastic Competition. Keep up the great work, Mustangs. The Matia Valley Art Department highlighted this work as well as many other students' art at the reception of the Dark Horse Gallery on February 24th. The student, artist, family, friends, and staff were able to celebrate the creative talents of these individuals. And for athletics, a very successful winter season across the board. For girls bowling, Shelby Hess made it to the sectionals. Keep up the great work. For dance, the dance team received the award of IDTA Champ for their prom routine and did well at Nationals in Florida. The cheer team qualified for state but came up short to making it to the championships on past Saturday, sorry. They finished 12th in state. For girls volleyball, they had a very successful season with a strong team and dynamic bond. The girls had a very successful conference and put their best foot forward. This is the first year that the women's gymnastics team had a co-op with all three Valleys and had a very successful season. The wrestling team is under new leadership by Coach Kevin Garbus, and he reported a successful season, and he's looking forward to see what the future holds. And I'm sure I missed out on some of our Mustangs' achievements, so you're just gonna have to stop by our trophy cases to see all the awards our hard-working Mustangs have earned. My time here at Matia Valley is coming to an end. Taking over from me will be Rashvante Amseraj, who is a current junior at Matia and will be presenting at the May 1st meeting. Thank you. That's all I have for the February board report. And as always, go, go Mustangs.
So, Saad, I want to thank you for all of your reporting.
For two years.
Yes. You were here for one of our most dramatic meetings, and I'm thankful that after that it became calm again. But thank you so much for all of the information, and so what are your plans?
My plan is to attend either Purdue or Loyola University for nursing.
Oh, wonderful. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the time and this opportunity. It was an absolute pleasure. Thank you.
Been our pleasure. Thanks, Saad.
Thank you.
Okay, it is now time for public comment, and 60 minutes is allowed for public comment. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have four speakers. The first speaker is Kelsey Kuderna. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kelsey Kuderna. I'm a fourth grader at Longwood Elementary. We moved to Naperville two years ago because of the high-quality school district. However, my daughter's experience at school has been less than the quality we had hoped. From the beginning, a boy in her class picked on her, pulled her hair, bruised her arm, and this went on for several months. The teacher and administration said that he liked her and was just playing tag with her. After I made several calls to the school, they finally sat the boy down and told him not to touch her. According to your own handbook, this is the clear definition of bullying. The constant concern that this child was gonna harass her or touch her made it difficult for my daughter to learn. The fourth-grade classrooms are in a constant state of chaos based on my time volunteering and the accounts of several children in the class. These class sizes need to be smaller. There are so many behavior problems, and the teachers do not have enough support. There was an incident last week where a student physically assaulted another student over a pencil sharpener. The teacher asked the student to sit back down, and then the student lashed out at the other student sitting next to the pencil sharpener and caused her bodily harm. The offending child had to be physically removed from the classroom, only to be back in class the next day. This incident, among others, have made my child fearful of going to school. Her concern for her friends and her safety is impacting her ability to learn. She asked to be homeschooled regularly because she does not feel comfortable at school. My daughter loved school before this year. She no longer wants to go. She's afraid, and her fear is turning into a hate of school. The district's mission statement says they wish to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. My child and many others are unable to reach their greatest potential surrounded by chaos, fear, and violence. I'm here today for two reasons: to ask for actionable items now so the kids feel safe throughout this year, but also for the board to consider three fifth-grade classrooms for the next year to allow teachers smaller class sizes and to truly be able to connect and inspire their students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alicia Smith.
Hello, my name is Alicia Smith. I'm a former student, former teacher, current resident, current TIA/NT. My schools are Gregory, Wabonzi, Georgetown-Kendall, and Gombert. Indian Prairie School District 204 states that they have a commitment to equity and educational excellence, yet not all schools are included in this commitment. Four 204 schools fall below the state average in state testing: Fisher, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. The teachers, students, and families are striving for educational excellence, but the administration and school board are not committed to equity for those schools. When the district designed the boundaries of Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty, it gave them a low-income, free and reduced lunch population that has more than doubled the district average of 18%. Georgetown's low-income and free and reduced lunch population is more than tripled the district average of 18%. Then, the district created even more inequity by having three of those schools feed into Fisher Middle School. A student attending either Georgetown or McCarty from kindergarten through fifth grade and then attending Fisher will have attended a school for nine years that has not met the state average in testing. School districts do not have to create inequitable schools that cannot meet the state testing averages. Naperville 203 has a similar low-income, free and reduced lunch population to Indian Prairie District 204. Naperville 203's low-income, free and reduced lunch average is 15%. Unlike Indian Prairie District 204, Naperville 203 does not have a single school that falls below the state average in testing. As a result, or also, it is because they do not have a single school that has more than doubled their district's free and reduced lunch and low-income average. Indian Prairie School District 204's commitment to equity and educational excellence should be for all of its schools. The administration and school board should not be designing schools with inequitable obstacles for students, teachers, and families to overcome. We deserve to be included in the district's educational excellence. We want equitable schools for Fisher, Georgetown, Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ashley Pinto.
Hi. Good evening, board members and anybody in the community who is watching. I am a parent of three Longwood Elementary students, and we have been residents in the district for eight years now. I am also a mental health licensed clinical mental health professional, and so I come tonight, one, I really want to support Ms. Smith, who's been here many times. We wholeheartedly agree with her plea for equity in our schools, and I also share, one of my children attends the same classroom with Ms. Kudra, and I really want to second what she said about safety in the classrooms, and my child has felt very unsafe. He has experienced numerous incidents of being physically assaulted, having his private parts touched, being called all sorts of names. There is a big problem with safety and bullying in the school, and our children are not feeling safe, let alone able to learn. From the trauma, but I'm coming to speak to you today from a trauma standpoint. I have facts from the National Center for Traumatic Stress stating that one in four children in our schools across the country have experienced traumas that are impacting their learning. I would venture to say that students attending Longwood and the other schools that Ms. Smith mentioned, that the rate is much higher in our demographic. Just to share some more information about how trauma can impact learning, a single exposure to a traumatic event can cause jumpiness, intrusive thoughts, interrupted sleep, and nightmares, anger, and moodiness, and social withdrawal, which can interfere with concentration and memory. These are things that are important, obviously, in their academic achievement. Chronic exposure, which is what we're experiencing as a school, and we also bring as a community... apologies, I thought that was on Do Not Disturb. Chronic exposure, especially during these early childhood years, adversely affects attention, memory, and cognition, reduces the child's ability to focus, organize, and process information, interferes with effective problem-solving and planning, and results in overwhelming feelings of frustration and anxiety. We are seeing this daily, hourly, at Longwood, and it is happening on the child's level as well as the staff's level. So I am asking for the board to consider short-term stop-gap measures. While you're in the process, I understand that there are some trauma-informed approaches that are being rolled out. Thank you for that. We need assistance now. We have been in crisis all year, and we need to make sure that all levels of staff are informed.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much.
With a current trauma-informed response at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gabrielle Pinto.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Pinto. I'm Longwood resident. Have our three boys with my wife at Longwood Elementary. They're in fourth, second, and first grade. I want to sort of piggyback off of some of the themes that have been set already tonight and have been set at previous board meetings. Longwood is in crisis. It's on fire. Kids go there in fear. They cannot learn. We process nightly with our three boys, often ending in tears. They know. They hate school. They're afraid. We voiced our opinion many times, and we understand that there's a lot of staff that really does care. There is no question that all the staff has their hearts and their minds in the right place. This is not an indictment of anybody that has done anything wrong or hasn't done enough. It just is. And we ask that the response and the conversation, be that of solutions, candid conversations, and acknowledgement. We hear a lot of very positive things that happen, very great achievements that happen within our district, and we are proud. But we are in crisis, and our kids are living in a proverbial war zone in Longwood, and they are suffering. Parents are experiencing the loss of confidence in the administration, not because of lack of effort, but because of lack of results. We are dealing with the aftermath of post-boundary changes, which have shown to reveal some inequitable components, which I'm sure we are trying to combat, but there needs to be more. So my plea here today is that, one, we acknowledge there's a problem openly. That communication to parents not only aims at placating their concerns, but acknowledges their concerns, and also communicates actionable items that are aimed at addressing with specificity the problems now and moving forward. As a community, we are hurting. These are our children. Sorry. Thanks. These are our babies. We came to Naperville because we expected a certain amount of equity in the schools and a certain amount of responsiveness when concerns are brought up. And we see that people care. We see that we are getting responses, but there just isn't enough. We need more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie Community, I will start my comments by reminding our community that on Saturday, we will have our Mental Health Symposium at Matia Valley High School from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. The keynote session, titled Protecting Our Children: Understanding and Monitoring Youth Mental Health, will be presented by Kids Matter and the Naperville Police Department in partnership with Linden Oaks and Fox Valley Institute. The panel of local experts will discuss the types of stressors local teens are facing today, the warning signs that a child is struggling with depression or suicidal ideations, and practical ways parents can monitor for these signs. The presentation will also include tips for parents regarding phones, internet safety, and social media. You can learn more by visiting our website for information. Childcare will be provided, and some giveaways will be made available. Do you have a child going to kindergarten next year? Do you have friends who have children going to kindergarten next year? If so, please visit your home school on March 13th to gather information about kindergarten registration. You can find the information on your home school's website. You can complete the kindergarten information sheet. Please do not wait until late in the summer to complete the information. If you see new families who move into the area, please help them find with finding the information. Schools use the information to help with putting students in their assigned classes, and the sooner we have the information, the better with allocation of teachers to schools. As a reminder, there is no school on March 2nd due to parent-teacher conferences and no school on March 3rd due to Institute Day. Please plan accordingly. As I shared last meeting, we are working with Kids Matter Collaborative Youth Team, District 203, and Downtown Naperville Alliance on the Community Kindness Campaign. We are looking for acts of kindness or doing acts of kindness. Information has already been shared with students and PTAs, and you can also find a display at the Naperville Library. Finally, I do want to remind parents that the Five Essential Surveys are open now for parents to complete about their schools. These surveys are very important for each school to gather feedback from the parents. Information from the survey is used by the schools as part of their school improvement process. Based upon survey results, goals may be created to address the needs mentioned in the surveys. You will have until the end of March to complete the surveys. The Five Essential Surveys respond to our strategic Plan Priority 3, Objective 1: We're providing an opportunity to hear from our parents about their schools. Ms. Donahue, I'll now turn it back to you.
Thank you. I now need a motion in a second to approve Consent Agenda Items D through M. I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through M as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Ms. Grover.
The motion passes. Next up, we have a presentation from Ms. Trudy Ranson regarding the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation.
Thank you so much for having me back again. The last time I was here was in September. And like I like to say, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation does a lot of quiet good around the district, but tonight, we're gonna be a little louder and share with you exactly what we've been up to since we've last met. Turns out, quite a bit. No wonder I'm so busy. We're gonna talk about just a few things that have happened and transfer into what we are doing now and what's coming up with the foundation. We have given out six A-plus awards. There's five there. The A-plus award is given once a month to a teacher in the district who I don't know how they choose, but they do. Only five of them are up there. Our most recent, our most recent award winner, congratulations, Mr. [inaudible] award for February. IPEF 2022 wrapped up with their 5K and half marathon in October. We had a small but mighty team, 228 strong. Thirty-one of our schools were represented on that team, and in total, the team raised over $80,000. Because half of the money raised by each runner goes directly back to their school, IPEF was delighted to be able to write multiple checks to those 31 participating schools, thus shy of $37,000. We gave out 11 innovative teacher grants in November and December. Some of these teacher grants were for projects that I want to be part of in the classroom. If I can get into Mr. Regusa's Design Your Own Beverage Lab, if you're watching, Mr. Regusa. I would love to do that. It sounds like it would be super fun, and we also had some incredibly fascinating proposals: learning the genetic flow of information modeling, breakout EDU support. We have all kinds of fantastic and innovative ideas that we were proud to fund in the classrooms around the district. We ran our Gifts of Gratitude for the third year in a row. This year, we gave out 205 gifts to various teachers, parents, and community members, and a few students made a donation to the foundation in the name of a teacher, and that teacher received a certificate and a personalized note from the donor. I got a lot of incredibly positive I got a lot of incredibly positive feedback from the teachers. It was a fantastic holiday uplift for them. Over 30 schools had teachers who received these awards. IPEF proudly funds the holiday concerts, collage, Prism and Crystal at the high schools. If you had a chance to go see them, they were fantastic. I'm not just saying that because I'm a proud parent of a Matia music student. But yes, they were all wonderful and congratulations to all three high school musical departments. Our Kid Essentials Program that we run in conjunction with the district has so far this year spent over $20,000 helping our homeless and low-income students. And when we say Kid Essentials, we do mean essentials. We are making sure that these kids have things like school supplies, food, clothes, shoes, transportation. All of these things that are so essential to living and that no student should have to worry about when really they should be able to just focus on learning math and reading Tom Sawyer. So we are helping out there as well. And thank you to the many community and private donors who are helping us with our Kid Essentials Program. We are super excited to bring back the Young Hearts for Life cardiac screenings. IPEF has sponsored this program every year, every other year since 2009. We had to take a small hiatus during COVID due to health concerns. But this year, we are back in our high schools. Every high school student is eligible to get a free heart screening. I believe our student representative from Matia mentioned this. We have been in Niqua Valley at both the freshman center and the main campus. And we have been at Matia Valley. Over 3,000 high school students have been screened. And of those 3,000 students, 27 have been flagged with previously undiagnosed heart conditions. In the past, those heart conditions have ranged from anything from a flutter to full-blown needing a pacemaker. This program saves lives. I can't emphasize this enough. It is hugely important to keep doing this program in the district. And thank you to Edward Elmhurst, who is also sponsoring this. And the amazing volunteers at Young Hearts for Life who come in and do the screenings. Well, Bonzi Valley Screening is going to be April the 25th. So all of you high school parents, please register your students. And if you are able to volunteer on that day, we do need many volunteers to keep this program running. So please volunteer if you are able. All right, well, transitioning into the now and the future. IPEF is holding its Second Annual Inspire Gala. The Inspire 23 Fine Arts Gala is a week from Friday, March 10th. And it's going to be at Loft 28 West again in Aurora. It's a fantastic event. There's food, there's beverages, there's student musical performances from our high school students. There is a student art gallery, which then gets auctioned off as part of our silent auction. So please, if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, we still have about 50 tickets left for sale. So please, that's a live QR code. Come, and all of the money that we raise here goes right back into these programs we've been discussing. I would really like to personally thank the Board of Education. I believe everyone attended last year, and it looks like everybody's got their tickets to attend again this year. So I just think that speaks so well of the partnership between the foundation and the district. And thank you very much, all of you, for your support. We appreciate it. I have a couple of things that are not in my slides that I'd like to mention very quickly. The Valley Runway Program, which provides free prom dresses and tuxedos to low-income students who would not otherwise be able to afford to go to prom, is coming up on Friday, March 3rd. And that is always an amazing experience to watch, especially maybe just because I'm a girl. I love to watch the girls go in and pick out their dresses, and they look amazing always. So thank you to everyone who has donated gowns and funds to help make some high schoolers' senior years that much more memorable. Finally, Team IPEF 2023. I know it's crazy to be thinking about running in this rainy weather, but Team IPEF 2023 does launch its registration on Wednesday. So all of those registrations go live. Please look in your social media and for an email from the district giving you links to come run with us. This will be our 10th year running as a charity partner with Naperville Healthy Driven. And we are super excited to make some changes this year to make it a little more family-friendly. So while we do have a $204 charity minimum to raise for all of our runners, students who register with a parent only have to raise $25. So register, bring your student on board, and let's make this a family affair this year, everybody. Finally, I'd like to wrap up with how people can make a difference at home. Please join us at the Inspire 23 Gala Event. If you can't go, we have a fantastic silent auction that's going to be an online and in-person event. And that goes live on Friday. And links for that will be on IPEF's social media and on their website. Nominate a teacher or staff member for the A-plus award. We want to hear your stories. Even if your teacher does not win, they stay in the pool till the end of the year. And every teacher gets a copy of their nomination. So the teachers know, right? They know how much they are appreciated by their students, by the parents, and by the community. Please register for Team IPEF. Registration is open from March 1st to April 30th. And if anyone has any questions or would like to learn more about any of these programs, you can visit the IPEF website at ipef204.org. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I would like to thank you, Trudy, for going through this. So many people don't understand what IPEF does for our district. And it was such an important list of programs that you laid out. And even other things that were involved with, like the robotics clubs too. So it's many opportunities to affect the district in a variety of ways that maybe wouldn't be possible without the support and funding from IPEF. So I would very much encourage everyone to donate, go to Inspire, participate in the silent auction. There's a variety of things you're auctioning off from senior experiences, right, for graduation?
Yes.
Artwork and various businesses around the area that donated.
We do. We have golf packages. We have signed items from the Chicago Bears. We have museum days and zoo outings. And just, there's something for everyone there, absolutely. And thank you. I would like to point out that the foundation is an independent entity from the school district. We receive zero tax dollars. So events like Inspire, donations from parents, donations from community businesses, they keep us running and enable us to keep up all of these amazing programs for our students and our teachers.
And just add into that, too. It's important that the community knows that the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation has been around for 35 years, as you touched on in your last presentation in September, and has raised and helped fund programs to the tune of over $5 million. So it's incredibly important, the work that you do, and it's incredibly important that our community helps support that. Is there a Fine Arts Festival date this year?
There is a Fine Arts Festival. It's the third weekend in May. It's the third Saturday in May. And we're delighted that it's back live and in person. It is the biggest event that the district puts on all year. It happens simultaneously at all three high schools. Last year, over 34,000 people attended, and it is completely free for the community. Every musical ensemble in the district performs at this event, every last one of them.
Just think how much we would raise if everybody just gave $5.
My budget worries would be so nonexistent if that happened. Yes, it would be fantastic.
Yeah, every small donation, large donations is extremely helpful. And if you like any of those programs that Trudy went through, you know, your donation makes those happen. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a presentation from Dr. Dawn Bridges regarding Right at School, this new program for before and after school.
As they're coming to the table, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board and the Indian Prairie Community, tonight, we'll be sharing with you a new opportunity for before-school and after-school care called Right at School that will become available for next school year. For several years, we have had an excellent relationship with the YMCA program Safe and Sound. The Safe and Sound program has been responsive to our needs and has established themselves with our parents and our community. With that said, a new program was introduced to the former superintendent before I came. That program, Right at Sound, made some offers that were very favorable to our parents and to our children. With the transition of administration and then COVID-19, we did not move forward with that change. Tonight will be our first opportunity to talk about the Right at School and how it supports our children and their families through different opportunities and provides more flexibility to our parents. Additionally, the Right at School program provides staff discounts and discounts to our families with a lower overall cost as well. We have at the table Dr. Dawn Bridges, Vice President for Educational Affairs with Right at School, and Mr. Adam Case, Chief Growth Officer, who will share information and be available to answer questions. Dr. Bridges?
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate this opportunity to finally come to you this evening. Do you want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Hi, Adam Case. I'm the Chief Growth Officer with Right at School. I've been with Right at School for about 11 years now. I was the chief of staff of the Chicago Public Schools before this. And I'm also a Right at School parent. I picked up my fourth grader and my first grader today. So I am happy to speak to you both from the lens of someone who's been with Right at School for a long time or as a parent as well. So thank you for the time today.
And I come to you today with 25 years of public education experience myself, classroom teacher, elementary principal, assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. And I get the great privilege to be able to go across the country and have conversations with district leaders around the ever-evolving shift and change of education and how we can really think about successful schools and what are those skills and make that happen. So we just really wanted to take a little bit of opportunity to kind of talk to you about who we are. I think that's really important, especially when parents are entrusting their children and who they're going to be with before and after school. But also to shed a little bit of light on how that landscape really has changed. And I can say this, our organization started over a decade ago. And our CEO, also an educator himself, really wanted to bring more quality to providing after-school. And that came out of latchkey kind of programs where the focus was on supervision and making sure that the kids were having fun and that they were ultimately safe. Fast forward through this last decade, we've really worked to be an organization that has ever evolved, really wanting to make sure that we're providing high quality while also giving parents that peace of mind and being able to give back. So I'm not sure if any of you have ever took the time to think about it, but your students are awake 5,000 hours in a year, and they're only in school 1,000 of those 5,000 hours. So there's a lot of extra time where we know that that time matters. And when we think about all the initiatives that are brought to the table for you to make those decisions on, you know it's very difficult to have that happen during the hours of 8 to 3. And so we really want to be able to capitalize on that extra 1,000 hours. And if you think about before-school, you think about after-school, about all the intercession times as well as summer school, that could add up to another 1,000 hours. I also have the distinct privilege of being the co-lead for AASA's Social Emotional Learning Cohort. AASA is the National Organization for Superintendents. During COVID, they all got together, superintendents across the country, as well as many current educational researchers, such as Dr. Bill Daggett, Dr. Lyndon Darling-Hammon, as well as some big organizations like Boeing and IBM, to really talk about how are we going to get to the goal of student success? Now's the time where we can really reimagine and rethink what school can and should look like. And they all came back and said that it is imperative that when you're thinking about student success in a very holistic way, that you are thinking about before, during, and after. And so when you come up and you plan your strategic goals and you think about that, you have to be thinking about that time. And in that wheel that you can see, you can see social, emotional, and cognitive growth is a big part of that, as well as culture. But I want to point out the dark green line. Those are learning accelerators. And they've identified learning accelerators to really combat some of the loss that happened during COVID and etc.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Dirt?
I know you got some important things to say.
Thank you.
We have all the time. Oh, they're struggling.
Let's try to get her to try this.
Sure, thank you.
It was me. We're troubleshooting.
All right, we are going to resume.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there like an intercession?
No, thank you.
No, no, not at all. No, last sentence on the slide, really just to reiterate around the number-one piece of that student success that's necessary are intentional relationships. And when you look at the research, the most impactful part of a child's educational journey really usually doesn't happen during the school day. It happens outside of school day. And so part of my mission and charge really is to have conversations around how do we work smarter, not harder, and really think about that time in totality. And so when you look at this research, it really supports that when you're putting high-quality programming in out-of-school programs, you can get these results. And the longer that students are in these programs, you can get better academic performance. You get better mindset. And so when you're thinking about that whole child, ultimately, you're really building that sense of belonging, and students are a part of something. And that does transcend directly back into what happens in the classroom. So when students feel safe, it goes back into that classroom and they're ready to learn. We also have done our own research, and there's research out there that supports exactly the same thing, that the longer that students are in our programs, we are getting positive values and increasing their positive identity, their social skills. So when we think about the Castle social-emotional competencies around relationships, conflict management, self-regulation, we're seeing that the longer that students are in our programs, that we are really seeing a true benefit in what's happening during the school day. So how are we different? We have a components, we have six components in our after-school program. And so we really do want to believe in voice and choice. We want to meet kids where they're at. But there is intentionality around everything we do. All of our academic components are aligned to the national academic standards. And our social-emotional, as I said, is aligned to the Castle competencies. So we kick off with a town hall. It really is kind of like that morning meeting that you have, your students have in their classroom. It's about building that sense of community. We provide snack. You can see, as you look at the six components, it goes right into then a fitness blast. We know how important it is to get the brain moving and that we can really strike up some energy with students. But again, everything we do, while it looks fun for kids, has intentionality around it. There are objectives that are aligned to a standard of everything that we're going to be doing. We also know that homework help is critical. We pay for our, ooh, battery's running low here. Is that me? We know that homework is critical, and parents don't want to be picking up their child and still having an hour or two hours worth of homework. So we will pay for our staff to sit down So, we will pay for our staff to sit down with your, with your staff to learn any special math initiatives. If your character counts school, PBIS, we really want to get down to the vernacular of that vocabulary so that we're not something separate. So, what's happening during the day really transcends, it is a true extension to what happens after school. Our double play, triple play, we'll kind of talk about that in the next slide. That's our curriculum, as I said, that was developed by all of our staff that works in our curriculum department.
One second. Do we need to stop again?
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We also have time for that self-directed inquiry. We understand that it is super-important for us to be thinking about student interest, and we know that the research says if kids aren't thinking about what they're interested in or what they feel that they're good at by the age of nine or 10, we're a little bit behind the game. And so, we really want to be able to offer opportunities within our programming around a day in the life of, or students feel really positive about an interest that they have, and we want to allow them that opportunity for those passion projects, that they can explore those, that we know that during the school day, there really isn't enough time to be able to take advantage of those things. Our curriculum, as I said, really is meant to focus. It's not meant to be like you're working on geology during the day in second grade and you're going to have that extended lesson in geography in the afternoon. It's really about those soft skills. When we look at and we have conversations with employers, it's those soft skills like critical thinking, problem-solving, engineering. What are those opportunities that we can provide to get kids interested in where they want to explore? Design thinking, those iterative processes where kids can think what's working, what's not working, how do we fix it? Let's go back around and do it all over again. Those are what we talk about, and we call it disguised learning because we know the last thing that kids want after school is to be having more tutoring or skill and drill. We really want them to get excited about school, and that's how we work to build that love of learning. Where we really find ourselves different is around our ability to be different. We really want to sit down and be that true partner and how we can build and grow the capacity of your district together. And so, what you may need us for this year or in the next couple of years might be different than what you're going to need from us five years from now. And so, we really spend a lot of time when we're looking at partners to build on what those look like. What are those pieces of the strategic goal that are important to you at the district level, and how can we help you get there? And then, we also sit down and work to build relationships with your principals and talk about at an individual building level, what's important there and how can we help support you? So, if you're, you know, flat in math scores, you know what? We're not going to sit there and do skill and drill math, but we're going to infuse more math fun games so kids get excited about it so that when they go back into the classroom with the certified teacher, it's making sense for them. I talked about aligning to your specific district objectives. We are looking to, I know that it's always of question, we are looking to lower the rates. It is something that's important to us. We're a mission-driven organization. We also give sibling discounts, 10%, military discounts, and with having half of the schools in your district, we're also going to offer 50% for free and reduced lunch students. And we really, I think a big thing in talking with Dr. Tally, as well as Dr. Sullivan through this process, is around equity and access for all. And in really working to get all of your schools, we really want to be able to offer all of your kids 100% free for those students who earn free and reduced lunch. And that is our mission of really wanting to be able to accomplish and provide those opportunities for students. If you think about true after-school and Latchkey in its traditional old sense, like when we all went to school, it was about 8 to 10% of the school population. Our goal is we want to be able to create a hub, a learning hub, an ecosystem where it's a one-stop shop for all, where kids can stay after and get whatever it is that they need, whether it be our Right Club program, that becomes the structure for you, and we can provide those other things, those interests, those electives, whatever enrichment. So, that makes us different. I would also say we are very prideful in how we train our staff. We believe in lifelong learning, so not only, and we know younger, the younger generation likes to do different faceted things, so we have modules online. We also have in-person training. Before they even come and set foot to even do training in any of your schools, they've had that kind of training. In fact, our scores, we are constantly going back and reviewing and surveying them. 97% of our staff feels comfortable and confident within the first 30 days of being able to execute that programming that we have in place. We have a team, I like to call them our integrity and fidelity team. They're instructional coaches who go around and make sure that we are doing what we said that we would be doing and providing that onsite coaching all the time. I talked about our curriculum. We also offer flexible one to five days. I know oftentimes it used to be full and part-time, or you just pay one rate. We want you to pay for what you're getting for. So, that drop-in care is hugely important. I will say my nephews participate. They don't need necessarily that care, but that enrichment has gotten to be so exciting for students that they now come one day or two days a week because they know that they're going to come and socialize with their, with their peers, they're going to get entrenched in something fun and do that. So, those are super-important to us. I talked about the drop-in care. We have an online portal that's super easy to use. We're very flexible with schedule changes. We understand that, that life is gray and things happen, and you need to be able to have somebody that you can count on for that aspect, but we believe that we do that much more. And ultimately, it really is about that intentional partnership and that relationship that we look to and that we pride ourselves in growing year over year in districts. And I, I do believe that Dr. Tally, I encourage anybody, I know Dr. Tally has made some phone calls around different partners that we have across the state of Illinois as well as across the country, and, and we pride ourselves in those partnerships that we have. And we're willing to answer any questions that you may have.
That was good timing.
I know. Right before time.
Okay. Ms. Jane?
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Very informative, and it's clear the passion you have for this work, which is always good for us to see. If you don't mind going, I know yours is, your computer might be dead, but it was slide 13, when you were talking about the staff, just a little bit more about their training and their background. Do they have an educational background? How do you go about choosing your staff? And also, what is the staff-student ratio?
Sure. In the state of Illinois, I'll start there. The staff-student ratio is 1 to 17. So, we always like to go and work underneath that, but that is, we have to, according to the law, you know, fall within those requirements. But because of that flexibility, we're always working underneath those, those ratios. In regards to hiring, we really are locally inspired. We want to look to hire, whether it's your paraeducators or student teachers that may be at a local university. So, we have a recruitment team that that's all they do, is they look to hire. So, you have to have, you have to be 18, you have to have, like, those are the basic requirements, but we're really looking for the baseline to be people who are going into teaching, people who are passionate about kids. Like, that's important to us. Most of our program managers or area managers are working in some sort of line maybe into the educational field. A lot of our educate, our area managers and our, like, I know our regional vice president who oversees operations have some sense of an education background because they're passionate about kids. But as a requirement, that's necessary. In regards to background searches, we do, we take care of all that. We are willing to share all that information with you and partner with you in whatever facet that may, may look to ensure that we're getting the highest-quality staff that we have. Adam, do you want to add anything to what I said?
No, that was great. I mean, I think that we, also because we have such a strong base of, of operations in Illinois, what's really nice is that we have staff who are looking to advance and grow in their careers who have worked with us as educators, as program managers, who could become, you know, program managers or area managers and really sort of bring that, that experience. Just to add color on the background checks, obviously, the FBI and state background check, the checks of the two central registries, the DCFS checks, you know, nothing matters if not the safety of every child every day. And so, we are very, you know, obsessive about safety, sort of the table stakes of everything we do.
Thank you. I also appreciate the intention and the, the offerings that you're providing for flexibility and discount rates. I know young parents, I mean, especially what, I know I was in that situation, and I, I would have really appreciated these options. We are a majority-minority district, and we have a lot of students that come from various cultural backgrounds. For your staff, do you have any training modules or any kind of training that addresses that?
Absolutely. And we work really hard to make sure that the staff that we hire look like the students that, that are, that we serve. And so, that's important to us. And an example I would give, although a little different, is we have a district in California that we partner with, and they have a big influx of students who are deaf. So, how important it is not only to find staff who can work to communicate, both, you know, verbally, but as well from a, being deaf, but we've also worked to infuse activities and program different types of things so that all students who are in those programs who aren't deaf can still work to communicate and learn. And how great it's been such a cool thing to see this one thing in one school where there's been a need, and now we've infused that in all of our programs across the country. And there might be some child out there who says, "I want to be an interpreter." Like, that's something that's inspired me, and like, the littlest unintentional thing that we are trying to do to communicate and make sure that we were serving that population has now like done that. So, yes, we do, we work hard. We also, in all of our, I mean, we have a lot of modules, they're ongoing. So, we also incentivize our staff. That's why our retention rates are high, because we pay more, and the longer they're with us and the more professional learning they get, we incentivize them by pay. And so, they really build the sense of purpose. But a lot of those modules that they do are around child, child development, how do you ask open-ended questions, talking about working with students with special needs. We believe all means all wherever possible. So, how can we work to make sure that we're meeting each student on an individual level as best as, as we can, albeit it is a group-style activity?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Mr. Rising?
So, don't take this as a criticism, take it as a compliment. Clearly, Dr. Bridges, you've been in education because you're saying a lot of the right things. And Adam, you know, I, I understand you're, you're in growth, so, you know, I know the sales side of it as well. You know, my question primarily revolves around staffing. You know, the flexibility that you're offering is a wonderful option for our parents, but with offering that flexibility also comes the struggle of staffing correctly. And, and if you're having to look at that 1 to 17 ratio, you know, I'm assuming you need at least a week heads-up or something like that, right? I, I mean, because in order to, I'm assuming you initially find out how many students you're going to have roughly, try to staff it appropriately, but is the staffing constantly changing depending on what the week may look like from week to week? And can you kind of address that?
The drop-in is, we ask for 24 hours' notice, but we can typically accommodate less. So, we staff for growth to make sure that we always will meet the ratio, and typically we don't go up to exactly the ratio. It would be very rare that there would be 34 students with two educators. So, there's room to accommodate those drop-ins. And since we do this in so many places, we have a very good sense of what the attendance patterns are like, and certainly within the individual schools, we know that Friday's, you know, less attended than Mondays and Tuesdays, and so, we will schedule to that. In terms of hiring, you know, this is, our core competency is hiring great educators who love working with children, and we do it in some of the hardest-to-hire places, you know, in the country. We, we hire in, you know, Midland, Texas, which is in the middle of the Permian Basin where you can make, you know, $100,000 driving, you know, working in an oil field or in Mountain View where Google is. And so, we just have gotten very good at hiring educators who love working with children, and we do that in partnership with the district. We love to hire staff, as Don was talking about, and that's what enables us to be fully staffed and to accommodate families.
And so, I guess, you know, just general comments, I, I love the flexibility you offer for our parents. And don't get me wrong, I've extremely loved our partnership with the Y. But at the same time, I keep going back into my head, while there's great flexibility, while there's parent savings, growth isn't by chance. And we have stressed as a board to take our district to the next level. And that comes with engaging our students, inspiring our students, motivating our students. And I've looked at a lot of your success stories, which are in virtually almost every state across the country. You know, I think there's some really good lessons for us to learn, and I also think this allows us to kind of evaluate you guys for a year and see, you know, what we're seeing. So, I'm excited and, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover? I like the program. I think it's wonderful that you have incorporated so many of like the curriculum as well as social-emotional, all that stuff. The one question I have is, two years ago, when, you know, the presentation was first brought to us, there was an indication there would be a therapist onsite who would work with individualized plans of students we had. Do you still have that for special needs kids?
So, we, we have a master therapist, yes. She's on staff, so not necessarily onsite for 204, but yes. So, that's the job of like the program manager, the area manager, to work when she is needed to come in and then have conversations, build those strategies with our team, and then have any, you know, conversations necessary to ensure that the success of those students. So, yeah, she won't be like in the district every day, but yes, she's always available for consultations onsite and then to come in. But she supports a lot of students across the country.
Great. The other thing I appreciate also is because the finances, because sometimes every year they go up. So, what I did like is, two years ago, when the proposal was first brought up, it was the same pricing. So, that's kind of nice, and I just want to let parents know that the pricing, what is, what is your take on like how the pricing will be adjusted later? Do you see this as a consist, I mean, it's hard to tell, but consistent for a couple of years, pricing would be that?
Yeah. I, I mean, as, our, our goal is to make our program as accessible as possible to all families through the pricing, the flexibility, and the, you know, typical price increases are 2 to 3%. I would say is sort of average, you know, and, and obviously, that was a lot less than inflation this past year. And so, you know, but that's the, I think, what parents can expect, and keeping prices affordable for families is just very important to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Carubus?
I'm excited but skeptical. So, I come from, I had 12 years in the YMCA Safe and Sound program. And so, I'm really excited about the fact that the, we're expanding to some schools that we aren't currently reaching, and I am really excited about the pricing, the discounts, the flexibility. That all sounds great. I am skeptical on the staffing. We're going to hear a presentation after yours about our open positions, our inability to fill some current positions at our current rates. And so, although the, the value proposition might sound good, if we can't deliver on that promise to our students, to our families, to our parents, then we've all failed. And so, it might sound great getting this price, but if you can't get into the program, if, you know, the program gets discontinued, then, then we failed. So, I'd like, I, I like the options, I like the possibilities, and I'm definitely willing to give it a try. But I'm looking to, with a keen eye, saying, can we actually deliver on this promise? Because as a parent, those all sound great, but if I'm going to sign up and I can't get in, if I'm going to drop my kid off and I've, you've reached the limit, then, then we haven't done what we wanted and promised. So, excited, you know, but with a skeptical eye.
Well, I will say, we do not do wait lists. So, we will just continue to hire staff as needed. And so, that's one of the things, sometimes when you have an organization that's a little larger, is to be able to then think creatively. So, we have a team that their job is to just come in, like after this starts to roll, and have conversations with principals and walk the buildings. Where can we be? We understand how, you know, schools are hustling and bustling all the time, right? And sometimes the gym is being used on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We, we support some schools that have 300 things going on after school, and we're like, okay, we'll be here today, and we'll be over there tomorrow. We're willing to do that. We're willing to sit down and build those relationships with your principals, with the admin assistants in those buildings who run the schools, to like say, where can we be today? What does this look like next week? Because we know how important that is. Because we know how important that is to make sure that parents have somebody that they can rely on.
Yeah, I would also just add, I totally appreciate that. I think, of course, the proof is in the pudding and delivering. And, you know, I think we are very committed to a successful year. And typically, our programs grow significantly from year one to year two, you know, from parent word-of-mouth, but really, most of all, from child to child word-of-mouth. And I think it's because of the experience that they're having. And we are just thrilled for the opportunity to show that here, prove that here. So I really appreciate your comments.
I like to say, I often say, you know, I get to travel all over and see programs everywhere, and more often than not, I'm seeing some child crying because their parent has come at, like, 5 o'clock and they want to stay till 6:00 because they're not done. But I will say that you had, some of your staff came, some principals, an assistant soup, and they got to witness a child crying. And I was like, see, I told you, I didn't make it up.
It's not a plan.
It wasn't a plan, yes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you. I will give a rate the appreciation for the flexibility. And I do have, I am challenged, as my co-board member, Karubas, indicated. One of the concerns I do have is, you know, we have challenges with staffing. And so would be interested to know any creative ideas that you have used, because staffing is a challenge across the country. So very interested in to understand creative ideas that you've used. I know you mentioned sometimes of the increase in salary for those that have persisted, but how do you encourage students, you know, that are studying education or others to come on?
So a couple of things. One, we love to hire your aides or paraprofessionals. Many districts will, you know, have their aides typically work around 30 hours. Those aides may be looking for additional hours. We love it because they know the students. We provide great training that they then bring back into the classroom, and it also helps with the retention for additional hours. We also partner with schools of education, which Don touched on. We have built, actually, with districts, pre-service practicum programs where students who are studying to be teachers can get, you know, pre-service credit to work in our program, and they're supervised. What's really nice about that is that then your principals can see them, you know, as their student teachers, and they can really build that pipeline into your schools as you're looking for hiring teachers as well. You know, with unemployment so low, someone could have a job here today and then go someplace else tomorrow and get a new job. There has to be a strong, you know, Y, W-H-Y, right? And for us, it's that there, you know, people who want to be teachers need practical experience, delivering curriculum, doing behavior management, practicing their skills there. And we can help build those skills for our staff, many of whom want to be teachers. And then last, we hire retired educators, retired teachers. You know, those are some of the key ones. You know, there's also different groups of folks, like artists, who may want sort of non-traditional hours. And so it's really building that right mix at each school.
I think I would add one thing to that, is oftentimes, we'll go ahead and hire people to be in our before and after-school program. And then finding that in the building, your principal's struggling with lunch supervision. While we've already hired someone and they're like, oh, do they want that? Sure. And then, so then they can tack on and then work for you for that lunch supervision or that morning recess or whatever that looks like. And then it becomes that win-win. And then sometimes they have folks that we say, oh, can we hire them? So it's kind of like a reciprocal thing that goes back and forth. But it does, it also really lends to the culture and building that fabric within the community of those folks being there throughout the day.
I am always very interested in research and understanding where the research comes from. So as I look at Slide 5, and I see some of the increases, math and reading, improved motivation, growth skills. Where do you, how do you discern that? Where does that come from? And how have you, is that few schools, nationwide, regionally?
There's just a, like, a raft of research on the impact of high-quality after-school programs. The Wallace Foundation does a very big study on it. There's another study, America After 3. It captures much of that research. And then we've done our own research, working with the Search Institute, which is an SEL tool, and that's on the next page, looking at the SEL impacts that our program has.
And After-School Alliance is another one.
Right.
Slide 12. Oh. And this may be a little bit more, I'm not sure if this is so much, that you can answer this or whether I need assistance on the administration side and whether it can be answered today or not. But when I look at, you know, our 50% for free and reduced lunch families, that can still be a challenge, getting a 50% discount. How does that compare to what a free and reduced families are investing currently? And how do we help with that gap?
That's a question I'll have to get back to you. I don't have that information in my head, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then my last question, do you guys offer opportunities? I'm just wondering, do you offer opportunities on holidays or during the summer as well? I couldn't.
Yes, on holidays, we can really operate any day that the district would like on teacher-in-service days, on half-days. And then we run summer camps as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Fostick.
Hello. Thank you for the presentation. It sounds very exciting. I do share a little bit of the worry and hesitation about the staffing, because you guys must be magic. Because, right, staffing is a nationwide issue, but it sounds like you've got some excellent strategies worked out to keep that going. One of my questions is, how consistent is your staff? Are children seeing the same people at their school daily on the days that they're there? Before and after?
Yep.
Do those swap in and out?
Nope. We want them to be consistent. So again, like, in the beginning, you know, obviously, we're going to do our best to put our best foot forward in having the best staff that's going to be there, and that they're going to be consistent. They will say, usually, 70%, 75% of our staff retains year after year after year. There's going to be that one educator that's going to get a job or go somewhere else. But for that year, you are going to, 99% of the time, going to have that same, that same person. And then obviously, if they're sick, we also overhire, so there's subs. And so those subs can rotate because there's enough buildings around this district and within this area. I mean, we have programs all around here that there really is not that issue.
That's right.
Okay. You mentioned you don't have a wait list.
We don't.
Yeah, we will continue to hire to support all those students.
So we could have programs that have 200 kids in them, we can have programs that have 50 kids in them. We will continue to hire to support.
So several of the schools, I need to pull up the school list here. We have a couple Title I schools. So if we have, you mentioned that for the free and reduced lunch population, that that would be free?
Once, once we can get all of, have all of your schools and work to build that, we will continue to increase what that looks like.
So it's 50% in the first year?
Yep. So for free and reduced lunch, it would be 50% tuition?
Correct. That's right.
For the foreseeable future, until at some point, we hope to make it free? But we don't know when that will be yet, or we do?
So the...
We're hopeful. I'm just trying to get a...
No, absolutely. So it's 50% that's a discount that Rite Aid School provides. Just to point out that there is also Action for Children funding through the state. And so for children who qualify, it can be up to 100% free. But that, the 50% is just offered, you know, through Rite Aid School and will help those families to qualify as well.
How do you guys pay all your staff? I'm not a finance person, so I'll have to forgive my, a little bit of my ignorance in this area.
You have a good margin built in.
But, yeah, I'm like, there must be some fundraising going on then.
It's by the programs being popular. I mean, really, the key is to grow the programs. And there is demand in the schools. And having, you know, programs that grow year after year supports, you know, paying the staff well and providing these discounts to make the programs accessible.
Okay. And I will say, like, it, you know, what started years ago as being, you know, solely paid has now evolved because of COVID and grants and things that are out there, where districts are now, as you all talked, Mr. Rising, talked about, you know, we want to take this to the next level. There are districts who are now saying, we are, we're going to make this a budget item because we want all kids to be able to have access to this. Not that that's where you need to be, I'm just saying, like, that time and that enrichment and those opportunities to allow children to be with others and apply some of the things that they're learning during the day in a very authentic way after school matters. And so to Adam's point, that Wallace Foundation, brand-new meta-analysis that just came out a week ago, really talking about success in schools and out-of-school time and the need for it.
Okay. My other question is, and this is just a broad question for before and after-school care, because it looks like during the schedule that there is a pretty fixed schedule. How does that accommodate kids who come and go? Right? Because, as you know, some kids get picked up at 5:00, some are there until whatever time you close, or some for a town hall in the morning, you know, if they show up late, they always miss that place, or how does that work out?
The schedule that we show was the after-school schedule, the before-school schedule, as much as, so we have designed and redesigned our before-school program, as much as we would like to have it heavily scheduled. People do come at different times, and honestly, children are often tired in the morning. And so it's built to accommodate, you know, students coming at different times. We have different activity stations set up, both to do our curriculum. We have students who want to do their homework, we have students who want to sit quietly. Honestly, a lot of children just want to talk about what they did the night before in the program. And so because your before-school is a little longer than a typical before-school program, you will be able to build more activities into it, but that's just sort of a sense of the difference.
Okay.
And then for after-school, yes, there are, you know, we would love for everyone to stay till 6:00 so they have a chance to do the curriculum and the other activities, but we know that, you know, families pick up when it's, when it works with their schedule.
Good.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Are all ages together?
So it is whole group. And again, depending upon, like, when we were, brought your team in, it was a large program. And so they come together usually and do the town hall together as, like, a big group, and then they break off. So when they do homework, in the particular one that they went to go visit, every floor, like, there was, like, K-2, there was 3-5, you know, and they were kind of broken up by, to do the homework aspect and stuff like that. So it comes and goes, it just depends upon the activity that they're doing, what that kind of looks like, how big of a group it is, and what we're trying to accomplish with the objective of that particular activity. But it is meant to be multi-age. It's not meant to be your kid's going to be in first grade and only going to be with first graders, per se.
My last question just had to do with Slide 5, which was about the research for kids being in the program longer. For the stats you show here, how long was that period of measurement?
Well, again, the more that they're in the programs, the more impact it's going to have on them. So students who are in there who come once a day, you know, once a week, you know, here and there, willy-nilly is not necessarily, you know, and all kids are different. So again, being able to directly correlate those types of things. But the study shows that the kids who are in there longer, and the longer they've participated in those programs, these are what they found. Does that make sense?
And that study was multiple years, so it increased each year, like, two years, three years, and so on.
Okay, so this wasn't...
It wasn't like a certain, yeah, that's right.
Six-month study or multi-year study?
Multi-year.
Okay.
Multi-year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Follow-up, thank you. That study wasn't your company, was it?
Correct. Yes, all of that data is, like, the Wallace Foundation data, America After 3 data.
Perfect. And then maybe our superintendent can field this question. But I asked it initially, and I'm hearing it again, regarding the world, the world word, curriculum. And it's a little bit of a hot-button item. And I want to make sure that we, as a board, as a district, are retaining, you know, the authority and the direction to say what curriculum gets done in our district. So can you address that?
So as the board does approve our curriculum, that happens within the school day. I think, as Dr. Bridges mentioned, we work with Rite Aid School to determine what are the things that will be happening in the before and after-care program. They do have certain things that they will want to do and use that are very effective, but they do want to work directly with the schools to determine, for example, if there is an issue with regards to mathematics in the school, how can we support that? And then, as she mentioned, the training that they do with their staff to piggyback what's happening with our, with our schools are doing. I think it's a natural connection as opposed to them doing something entirely different that doesn't make any sense. I believe what she said, Dr. Bridges said, that I really appreciate, it was the fact that there is this, what is the individual school's need? And how do we meet that need based upon what the school is saying that they need to have done? So whether we're working on robotics, whether we're working on, as I mentioned, trying to find a foreign, a world language program, anything of those nature, they will work with us to make happen. But this district, this board maintains the curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you, President.
Okay, thank you for the presentation and the program that you're discussing here. I think we've been looking at this for several years. And, you know, it is absolutely true that we are looking for ways to be the innovators, the forward-reaching district that is high-performing and supporting all of our children. And so looking at the opportunity to give high-quality programming before and after school is extremely important, and making that available to an even wider audience is something that I think is very helpful for us. Many of us mentioned the flexibility. I think that that's something that is unusual, having been a mother with children that had to go through this. I think that would be greatly appreciated. When you first talked about staffing, I, like others, was worried that suddenly you're going to go hire all of our teaching assistants or whatever. But then when you were discussing, well, maybe they work during the day, but they want to come in earlier and work before school and a little bit longer, you know? I think that that would be attractive for many people. So it was a thought that didn't jump into my head at first. I think we're all hyper about our staffing these days.
Of course, of course.
Yeah. What are the hours, like, before-school and after-school?
So I do believe currently hours start at 6:30 here. We would want to remain doing that same thing. And obviously, if we find that there's not a lot of students, you know, down the road that are coming at 6:30 and more are coming at 7:00, we can work to kind of make those adjustments as be. And then we also go up till 6:00. But again, as we continue to grow with your organization and find that there's a different need, then we work with you. I know in Texas is another example where, you know, they're serving, we're serving dinners and some because they're traveling so far to get to and from work that they're not picking their kids up until 7:00. So like, we'll work to see, but the norm, for the most part, is usually 6:00.
And I understand that you're in Elgin right now. Are you in any other local school districts?
A lot here. Around here, Lamont, Manuka, Itasca, Mundaline, Winnetka, CPS.
Western Springs.
Western Springs, three or four of the LaGrange schools. Oh, there's quite a few. Grace Lake, yeah.
So a great program, sounds conceptually wonderful, and look forward to seeing how this results in our district.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, our next presentation is the always-exciting Matt Shipley with the Financial Forecast and Budget Update.
My predecessor always got a better speaking slot.
Got to pay those dues, man. He's looking at you smiling like that.
I'm sure. Probably ice cream. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight I am presenting a five-year budget forecast, which will be the first of four budget presentations over the next several months, ultimately leading up to the passage of our budget for the 23-24 school year at an August Board of Education meeting. While the Board, while the Business Office oversees the budget process, the development of a mission-oriented budget is a collaborative process, and we are dependent on feedback from all stakeholders to ensure we are investing our resources in the most effective manner. I want to point out that the 23-24 budget will be the first budget completed after the adoption of our strategic plan. So I'm confident...
So I'm confident and excited that by using the priorities identified in the strategic plan, our budget process will grow even stronger. Developing a budget is a year-long process, and I don't think that more than a few days go by where we're not tweaking some aspect of it. But with that said, we really focus to, to start our formal presentations of the budget this time of year, really because there's three pieces of information that have, that we recently received in the Business Office. First, our annual audit report is completed and has been filed with the State Board of Education and with all other regulatory bodies. This process confirms that we have strong procedures and strong internal controls in place, and that our actual results are a good starting point for the assumptions that'll be used throughout this budget. So this gives me, and hopefully gives you, a high level of confidence in the assumptions and processes that we're reviewing tonight. Second, in mid-January, we received the calendar year CPI report for the 22 calendar year. This number becomes a key driver of our annual property tax levy and is also used for many expenditures, including our negotiated teachers' union agreement and several other contracts and vendor agreements. And then finally, about two weeks ago, the Governor of the State of Illinois released his annual budget through his budget address. Although the legislature still needs to work through the budget and adopt, ultimately adopt the budget, this becomes a good basis for what we can expect from the State of Illinois as far as state funding goes. So tonight, I want to briefly cover our current fiscal year, so fiscal year 2023, which we're about two-thirds through, compare where we are today with the budget we adopted in August. Period, starting with fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '28. Look at operating expenditures, we do have two non-operating funds in the district, so we'll look at those as well. And then finally, I hope to just kind of summarize the, the data coming from all four of those first points, and really look at what that means over different time horizons. So starting with a sort of short-term horizon, or what we can expect as we develop the fiscal year '24 budget, as well as looking at more of the medium or longer-term time horizon. So going into those fiscal year '25 and '26, then ultimately, five-plus years down the road at fiscal year '28. So with that said, again, here's a, here's a chart that shows January 31st, and that compares with our annual budget then that was adopted in August. I just wanted to point out a few key variances here. In general, we are, we are performing in line with budget, but we have two or three line items that I think I just want to comment on. So the first is if we look at the second line and revenue of other local revenues, we're exceeding budget by almost $5 million, and that's almost 20% of that budget line. So we'll look at that in a second, but that is really driven by an increase in interest revenue and replacement taxes. We are produce, we are expecting to be about $2 million below what we initially budgeted for our state revenues, specifically the state revenues tied to our categoricals. And the specific categoricals are transportation categorical, and we'll go into a little bit more detail of that as we start talking about how to project state revenues going forward. On the expenditure side, we do have some fairly significant savings coming out of the salaries and benefits line. As has already been hinted at tonight, we have some significant open positions. A decent amount of that savings, about half of that then is offset with us being over-budgeted in the contractual services line, and that's really a result, is as those positions become open, we need to find other ways to service our students. And so we do turn to some contractual labor or working with different staffing agencies or staffing groups to support those students. So as mentioned, our, our interest in replacement tax revenues are really exceeding budget. I think in the 50 years of the district, this could be the first time we're talking about replacement taxes and interest revenue at a budget presentation. These historically have been a very small portion of our budget, generally about 1% to 1.5%. And you can see this. Okay, maybe the first time in the, in 40 years we've talked about it. I'd have to go back and check the tapes for, for when the interest was last this high, as, as Board Member Kruba says. But traditionally, it's been about 1% to 1.5%. You can see this chart here shows the, the kind of cumulative total of those revenues over the last five years. And you can see prior to last year, we were, we were lucky to touch about $4 million, with some years being below that. But as we get into, to last year and then this year, we're, we're now at a point where last year we exceeded $8 million, and this year we're projected to go over $10 million. So this is really driving that, that positive variance, but these two revenue sources are probably the most sensitive revenue sources we have when we talk about economic conditions. So those interest, revenues are tied directly to interest rates. We know we're in a rising interest rate environment. Specifically around the time we were receiving our property tax installments in June and September, we saw some significant increases in interest rates, and that's really what's generating that. So the flip side is, we're being really cautious in how we budget or expend those revenues, because we know that just as quickly as they, they grew, they can potentially decrease, decrease as well. So if we start seeing situation where the Federal Reserve is, is cutting rates, again, specifically around the summer or fall, as we're really looking to invest, that'll directly impact that interest revenue. Similar story with the replacement taxes, that's a very small portion of the corporate income taxes received by the State of Illinois that, that get allocated to schools each year. So again, we've seen some very strong corporate income taxes received at the state level, and that's our share of that, but again, if we hit a recessionary environment or as corporations are continuing to struggle to adjust to higher prices or inflation and that their revenues or net income goes down, we could see that, that revenue shrink pretty significantly too over the next year or two. So, fill it with overtime, substitutes and, and other hourly pay. So we don't necessarily see all that savings directly, and obviously, we know this creates challenges for, for our schools as well. We want these positions to be fully staffed. This time last year, we did talk about some major challenges staffing bus drivers and custodial positions. We have seen improvements in those areas, although some openings do remain. I did want to point out, you know, we are not taking this fight to, to hire, to hire and retain quality staff lying down, we continue to actively recruit for openings. Included on this slide is a flyer for the upcoming job fair for teacher assistants. So there's, you can see that information, but we, our next job fair is March 10th. So we have continually tried to be more creative and, and reach out in new, new ways and as many ways possible to try and fill these, these positions. So, moving on to, to looking at the operating revenue forecast for the next five years, you'll see we've, we have this grouped by our five major revenue sources, which are our local property taxes, other local funds, our two sources of state funding, both evidence-based funding and then other funds, which is primarily the categoricals, and then finally, our federal revenue. Just want to, want to point out, property taxes are projected to continue to grow as a share of total revenues, so they already make over, up over three-quarters of our annual revenue. We're projecting that to increase to 78, almost 79% by fiscal year 2028. Really, that, that's a result of two other revenue sources, state revenue and federal revenue not keeping up with inflation and not keeping up with the needs of the district. The state revenue, that's really how the, that's really driven based on our experience with evidence-based funding and the most recent government, governor's proposal. And then with the federal revenue decrease, we're showing that almost exclusively in fiscal year 2025. That is that expiration of the, the S R funds or the COVID relief funds, which we talked about it several, several times throughout last year, but that was a, an original source of money of about $13 million, which we had three years to spend fiscal year 2024, being the final year that those funds are available to us. Again, it's kind of a, a repeat of last year when we talk about the Consumer Price Index and how that operates with our annual levy. So under the PTEL, or the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, which governs our property tax levy, we are limited to the amount we can increase our levy each year by the Consumer Price Index from the preceding calendar year. So the levy that we pass in December of 2023 will use the 2022 calendar year CPI as part of that calculation. That CPI, which became official the second week of January, came in at 6.5%. This is the second year in a row that it's above 5%, and so the 5% is the maximum you can, you can levy for, so it's CPI or 5%. So what this shows is that we spent, what this chart here shows is, starting in 2011, and really you can go back really into the 1990s with this number, we've never been above the 5% threshold, we've now been above it two years in a row. When I see those two points above that 5% line, to me, that, that, I think of that as almost a permanent loss of purchasing power against CPI. We don't have an opportunity to give that back in a future year that may be below 5% or may even below the long-term Fed target of 2%. So between those two years, we're now looking at almost 4% of lost purchasing power when you compare that to the Consumer Price Index. The fi, the final piece then, just looking, looking out to the future years of this forecast, so fiscal year, calendar year '23 and on, we are projecting that the CPI will return back to more normal levels, although we won't reach that 2% limit, or that 2% long-term target for, for a couple of years. At this point, I'd say this is really a, a best guess of CPI. It seems like depending on the day of the week or who you listen to, and again, you probably experience this too, as you're, you're reading the news or listening to the news, you know, people will, will predict that, that the CPI is coming down. It's going to be zero, you have people who think that we're going to be at another year above 5%. So we're really just trying to manage expectations and kind of put it somewhere in the middle for, for this forecast. I will say, part of our strategy with both our teacher's contract and with other vendor contracts is, we try to, we've made a conscious effort to tie those contracts directly to the CPI, so that if this number ends up higher than projected, our expenses will also be higher than projected and vice versa. So we don't end up in a situation where we have a low CPI, but we've built in long-term cost increases. Just wanted to point out a few other considerations as we, we start thinking about what our property tax levy will look like in fiscal year 2024. First year, 2023 is the quadrennial reassessment of all properties in the district. So, once every four years, our township assessors are required to review the assessment of each property and perform a physical assessment of each property. The other three years, it's really, it's really just kind of based on some sales data and using some analytics to, to update the values. So what happens is generally, once every four years, we see a significant change in property values, and then those remaining three years, we see some, some smaller adjustments. So we are going into the year that's going to have some significant adjustments in our total EAV. If you think about it, the last time this was done was 2019, so that is pre-COVID, it's pre, it's, it's pre the, the housing market increases we, we saw in 2021 and 2022. And so while there have been some adjustments through those other years, this is likely to be a significant adjustment to kind of catch properties up. With that said, it's, it's likely we're going to see shifting tax burdens between our residential and commercial properties. It's likely our residential EAV is going to increase faster or by more than that commercial property. So again, while, while COVID's created some significant increases in the housing market, it's created a situation where the commercial markets lagged, as we, we've seen challenges with traditional brick-and-mortar retail, with restaurants, with other commercial, commercial properties struggling through, through COVID and through the COVID recovery. Also, as the potential or will increase the amount of taxpayer challenges, so we see those specifically on the commercial side, more challenges in that reassessment year because the value's likely changing more significantly. That has the potential to lower our collection rate or delay collections a little bit. And then again, even though this may create a positive on the overall tax rate for the district, we'll still be limited to that 5% under PTEL. I did mention our we are fortunate, this district historically have a very high property tax collection rate. And then, the final assumption that we've built into this forecast tonight regarding our property tax levy is the amount of new property. We're assuming about $40 million of new equalized assessed value annually. That produces an additional 2%. On what we know is occurring in the district, both with new residential development as well as some new commercial development. We've received some recent good news or wins on the commercial development side, with the City of Naperville moving forward with the redevelopment of the Route 59 and Aurora Avenue area, with the City of Aurora working through a new development, some light industrial development on sort of the north side of the, the district, right, even north of Matea. And then, again, just knowing, knowing we have several residential developments and senior living developments kind of in queue as well. I, I will remind however, remind the Board, however, that the mall area, the Fox Valley Mall area is under a TIF. So we do not see new EAV for any development, we see, any commercial development we see in the mall area. Just kind of a, kind of an annual slide here, but, but something that, that we feel is important to, to reiterate to both the Board and the community, but we are in a system in Illinois where property taxes is the majority of our funding, both at Indian Prairie and with districts across the state. And this creates inequities and inconsistencies throughout the state in both the amount of resources available to the district, as well as the tax rate that is charged to property tax holders. This is an example that just compares Indian Prairie 204 to Naperville District 203. You'll see on the, the chart here, the EAV per pupil and the tax rate for those two, two districts. And these two generally have an inverse relationship. So EAV is the amount of property wealth measured on a per-student basis. Naperville 203 has about 50% more property wealth per student than Indian Prairie 204. And as you can see there, that means their green bar is, is significantly larger than Indian Prairies. And then the flip side, again, that inverse relationship is that they have a lower tax rate. So because there's more property wealth per pupil, they are able to pass part of that savings on to their taxpayers through a lower tax rate. With that said, it also creates a, a second source of inequity in, in the amount of resources available to the districts. And that's the chart down here to the right half of the slide, which, which just uses some, some of the data available through the evidence-based funding model to show that inequity. So, again, we've, we've shown this data in the past, but Indian Prairie's evidence-based funding percentage is about 84%. We are classified as a Tier Two district under that funding formula. Naperville 203, primarily because of that amount of property wealth, is at 119% as a Tier Four district. The second comparison in this chart, which I, I think is a little new, I don't know if we've shown this to the Board before, but as part of EBF, each district is assigned a local capacity target. And that's the state looking at that EAV number and saying, based on that number, this is the percentage of revenue we believe the district should be able to receive from local taxes with the remaining coming from state and federal sources. So looking at that EAV number for Indian Prairie, the State of Illinois says 65% of our revenue should come from local funds. We're actually receiving 75%, so we're receiving 10% more than the state recommends through EBF. Even though Naperville 203 receives more of their revenue from property taxes than we do, they receive 83%, their capacity target's 90%. So the state's actually contributing a higher percentage of their revenue than the state's funding formula would suggest it should. So again, just another way to, to sort of fill in that EBF formula to do so. And that E B F formula to do so. And finally, the the final number we show is is that student spending or that operating expense per pupil, we're about twenty six hundred dollars below Naperville two oh three on an expense per pupil basis. Just want to point out, we're showing this as just a comparison of of one district this evening. I wanted to go through and and show several data points to do that, but in general, this relationship holds with our seven other comparable districts that we use when when we talk about our student achievement, and generally speaking, those are seven unit districts that are the the highest achieving unit districts in the state of Illinois. So, we are definitely an outlier when it comes to expenditures per per student and E A V per pupil when we look at those seven districts. With that said, I will report, we have our point out, we do have several neighboring districts that do have significantly lower E A V per pupil. So, when they do this same analysis, they put us on the right and say, wouldn't it be nice to be Indian Prairie two oh four? And so, when we look at, for example, Plainfield, a similar sized district to us, their E A V per pupil number is about a hundred sixty two thousand, or again, almost seventy thousand below ours. As we go three oh eight, another one of our neighbors at a hundred thirty six thousand per student or almost a hundred thousand. We really are kind of stuck in the middle on this. We have some districts that are significantly higher than us, but we we do also want to acknowledge that there's districts that are significant. So, again, it's probably a good transition now to talk about the state revenue system. And again, when we that evidence based funding formula is is designed to specifically look at that local funding percentage or amount of local funding available before allocating additional funds. The governor did deliver his budget address on February fifteenth, and it did include increases for K twelve education. Total increases are roughly about six percent, and the breakout here is is pretty consistent with what it was in the prior year, funding three hundred fifty million for the evidence based funding formula, about eighty seven million for the categorical grants, and and then seventy five million for an early childhood increase is probably the new new piece to that that funding proposal. Specifics are still kind of kind of coming in a little bit, but the governor has made early childhood a priority for this budget, and and if you listen to his inauguration address, sort of for his second ca- um, second term as governor in general. With that said, his focus seems to be in in not necessarily funding programs that already exist, but trying to identify areas of the state that are underserved. So, realistically, I don't think we'll see a significant increase as a result of the additional early childhood funding. So, the the good news is there is some top line funding increases coming at the state level. I would say the bad news is that we are in still an inflationary environment and that funding percentage is basically in line with inflation. And then the sort of more bad news is that that doesn't necessarily mean that all that funding is gonna gonna trickle down to Indian Prairie proportionately. And again, just looking at the amount of funding we received last year compared to this year, we actually saw a little bit of a decrease in state funding this year. Again, even though last year's governor's budget didn't didn't include similar increases for for education. Just want to point out that these funding formulas really do rely on not just our data and what we we see at Indian Prairie, but the data from eight hundred other school districts. And so, we become kind of dependent on on some of the trends, both with student enrollment and and different student populations, and then when it gets to the categoricals, actual expenditures being incurred by the other eight hundred plus districts in Illinois. And that's why it gets a little challenging for us to to project actual increases or or changes in state state revenue, and also why, at least in this case, we we've actually seen a decrease in categorical revenue and in total revenue this past year. Quickly, just just again, already covered when we talk about federal revenue, I think the big story is those S R funds. F Y twenty four is the last year we will be receiving those funds, and we we plan on spending about four million next year. There was some discussion over the 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 past year, maybe when we talked through last year's budget, that we could see an extension of that deadline, but that talk has pretty much died. So, we do expect that to be a hard deadline with fiscal year twenty four being the last year for those funds. And. anticipated replacement funding coming from the federal government for those funds. We're continuing to forecast idea and Title One allocations similar to the current year. We are hopeful that at some point, the U S Census data that that drives those that funding, specifically the Title One funding, will be updated, and we will see some increases, but that still appears to be a couple of years away. I will point out the one area where we are currently exploring our potential opportunity to expand federal revenue is within our federal lunch program. We're exploring an opportunity to to enact what's known as the C E P program, which would expand free meals to all students at a handful of our buildings. That would be a cost neutral to the district expansion, so we would use additional federal revenue to cover those additional costs. However, it would only be available for qualifying schools, and the the qualifications are pretty similar to those Title Title One funding requirements. So, moving on to our operating expenditures, it again, shown here are expenditures by the the major expenditure categories, and we continue to project salaries and benefits to be about seventy six percent of our total expenditures from all five years of this forecast. We are including rising costs and inflation in our estimates. We expect that to continue for both next school year and fiscal year twenty twenty five. With that said, we do project at this time balanced budgets for all five years, and we we have the revenue line on top of this graphic here to show that revenue does exceed expenditures, albeit slightly in each of these five years. The salary and benefit assumptions used to produce this balanced budget include no change in total F T E or teacher F T E for next year, but then we do have some slight F T reductions in fiscal year twenty five and moving forward, and that's really a result of those S R funds expiring. And and again, maybe some of the title funds and other federal state and federal funds not keeping pace with inflation or with the local funding. We're projecting annual benefit increases ranging from four and a half percent to six percent. Healthcare inflation is an area that that tends to be a lagging component of C P I, so we've been fortunate that we've seen real stable insurance expenditures for health insurance and other benefits over the the past couple of years, sort of the one expenditure that's maybe trended with with no or very little inflation, but over even the last couple of months, we've started to see that that pick up, and we are seeing that, again, match the increases we're seeing in in many other price categories. And then I will point out, even though we do have several vacancies or significant vacancies as covered earlier, this forecast does budget to fill those positions next year. So, we do want to maintain those funds and so that when we are hopefully able to fill those positions in the future, we do have the funds available to fill them. Just wanted to show this this graph this evening. We showed a similar graph, I believe, last May in in one of our budget presentations, trying to graphically show that that relationship between our staffing and our enrollment, and really what maintaining consistent enrollment mean, consisting staffing means in an era of declining enrollment. So, since twenty fourteen, our district has in slightly increased, but generally speaking, maintained staffing while experiencing declining enrollment. So, the the orange line there is our our F T E, and again, you can see it's above zero percent by fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty two, so it's above that baseline year of of twenty twelve. But in that same time, our enrollments decreased by about twelve and a half percent. So, really, this is this is not necessarily adding positions, but but finding ways to reallocate classroom teachers to other support positions or using those classroom teachers to reduce classroom sizes without necessarily having to hire a significant amount of new teachers each year. So, with that said, with the expiration of S R funds and and some of the challenges with no new state or federal funding sources, we do expect we'll have to start declining F T E again in in the out years, starting in fiscal year twenty five of this this forecast. And and again, those are pretty minimal F T decreases each year, but they are they are decreases after several years of being able to to maintain stable enrollment or stable F T amounts or increasing them. The challenge is really that when we also look at our enrollment projections, we expect enrollment to really start stabilizing and maybe even rebound a little bit in in the out years of those forecasts. So, so the challenge is not only will we no longer be able to use some of those reallocated F T Es to 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 make some of the investments we've made over the last couple of years, but we could actually start going on going backwards a little bit on on class sizes, again, in fiscal year twenty seven and twenty eight. Just just so that the board has the data since twenty twelve, we have been able to reduce class sizes in K through five by about one and a half to two students as a result of this. With that said, we still have the largest class sizes among our comparable districts, the largest class size, some of the larger class sizes of the state above and above the state average, and also class sizes above what would be recommended under evidence based funding. Just want to cover some of the other expenditure assumptions included in this forecast. We are projecting transportation costs to increase by eleven percent next year, continued challenges both with staffing as well as fuel and other costs. We've included C P I increases necessary for other purchase services, technologies, and other supplies. We do include in this forecast the the current grant programs running, so we do include support for those programs. And I just wanted to to make a comment because I it it maybe sounds a little defeatist as I go through all these slides and talk about inflation and rising costs. That doesn't mean we're we're sort of taking taking this, you know, taking this without exploring every option to to push back on rising costs, both with with current vendors, both with exploring new opportunities, new vendors, et cetera. One area that we we have identified and where we do believe we'll have savings next year is in our print and copy functions. So, I I want to give some credit to our technology team led by led by Rod Mack, is they've really explored how a lot of the printing that we've done, that we've outsourced in the past, being able to bring that into district run copy centers. As part of that, there that we'll be working with our buildings on how do we proactively lower costs by, you know, printing in black and white instead of color, by electing to use one staple instead of a binding? And and we think we have some pretty pretty significant savings as a result of that. We will be coming to the board this spring just to take action on on this. Our current print arrangement includes an intergovernmental agreement with District two oh three that we will be looking to terminate, and so I just wanted to to bring that up again as a as an example of something that we are we are doing, that we were that demonstrates how proactive we are and that I think will will produce savings, and again, because we will need some board action to finalize that in the spring. So, this this slide here just shows the revenue and expenditures kind of combined. Again, just want to demonstrate that we are able to show balanced budgets for these five years, so if you look at that surplus deficit line, it is positive numbers all five years. And the other piece I did want to point out, though, is when you look at the fund balances as a percentage of expenditures, one of the other challenges of of the rising costs is that it it requires us to keep more money in. That sort of we look to maintain twenty five percent of our revenues or twenty five percent of our expenditures. As revenue expenditures increase, that reserve number also increases as part of that formula too. And so, while we won't get down to the, well, we still have some cushion on that twenty five percent target over the next five years, we likely will see a decrease in that that fund balance as a percentage of expenditures number, meaning we're getting closer to sort of the number the state uses for recognition status, and also closer to the 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 number that we use to main to make sure that we have financial stability and adequate cash reserves throughout the year. Moving on to our two non operating funds, the first one is our bond and interest fund. Quickly point out that we have gradual decreases in the annual payments each year, again, starting with the the levy we actually just passed this December, and the bonds are fully paid off on December thirtieth of twenty twenty six. So, I am able to present this five year schedule with a column that has no bond and interest payments, that last column for fiscal year twenty twenty eight. All these payments are fixed, so these amounts will not change. We are in the home stretch of paying off the bonds that really built almost every building in the district over the nineteen nineties. We anticipate that after that what's in the bond and interest fund will be sufficient to pay those bonds off and will actually leave us with a little bit of a surplus, that once those are paid off in full, we'll be able to transfer to another fund, most likely our capital projects fund. And then, once the. Levy will be eliminated, and that tax savings is passed along directly to the taxpayers, again, without any actions by the board. Our capital projects fund is our second non operating fund. Again, this this relies really on some one time revenue sources that were that were transferred into this fund several years ago, and we're we're using it to fund fifty million dollars worth of work over the next four summers. We're going into the second summer of that commitment that we made to the board initially in December of twenty twenty one. So, as you can see, we we do have the funds available to to fund that that capital work over the next several years. However, by the we get to the out years fiscal year twenty seven and twenty eight, this funding source will no longer be available to to fund our capital program. As the Board of Education knows, we are currently performing a facility assessment. This is really going to be a six to nine month process, but we are going through every building in the district to put together a long term plan. That'll really guide our our thoughts on on what we need to do and what funding we need to find once this funding, once this funding runs out in in order to fund our capital projects. I will say at a minimum, we expect that that will continue to say we need to spend somewhere in the 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 area of of thirteen million dollars, somewhere in the eleven to thirteen million dollar range, just to maintain the buildings we have today. So, that's just ongoing maintenance and addressing the the current deferred maintenance backup we have. So, as promised, I just wanted to to show this, kind of combine both the operating revenues, the operating expenses, and and the non operating funds, and sort of combine that information and look at it by fiscal year, trying to identify what opportunities we see and what potential challenges. So, when we look to to next year's budget or or fiscal year twenty four, we do see as an opportunity the ability to keep our current staffing levels, while we do project another year of declining enrollment. Again, we still see the S R funds available for one more year, as well as several other grant programs that we've presented to the the board this year, primarily focused on S E L initiatives. As just shown, we do believe we'll have funding available for our capital needs, and and as mentioned at the beginning, we may even have additional interest or additional replacement tax revenues available to to even further supplement or or further accelerate some of that capital work. The challenges that we see for next year, we do believe we'll still be in a challenging environment to hire and retain quality teaching assistants and other staff. We do expect to continue to see rising costs as a as a direct result of inflation. We do know our property tax levy will increase, again, it it's tied directly to C P I, but it will not increase by the full C P I. Again, we'll be limited to that five percent cap. And then the final challenge, again, consistent with prior years, is that our state revenues are not keeping up with the Consumer Price Index or keeping up with that increase in local revenues. Again, looking at more of a medium term horizon or looking at fiscal year twenty five, fiscal year twenty six, a few less opportunities, unfortunately, and a few more challenges, but we do still believe we'll have funding to. Capital projects and continue to work on our our deferred maintenance needs. We do see those declining bond and interest payments, which will pass along some savings to our taxpayers. And again, if that federal Census data is updated, it is it is a potential opportunity to see some increased federal funding through through Title or or other grants. But but moving on to the challenges, first, we do see an expiration of the S R funds as as a main challenge to overcome. Again, that's about four million a year. We see uncertainty in in other federal and state grant awards. Again, a lot of those S E L grants are are one or two year grants, so we will need to look to either replace those or possibly reduce the services we are providing under those grants. We do, as mentioned, project some possible F T E reductions in both these years. And then and then the final piece is as we as we look at the broader economic horizon, and again, depending on who you listen to or the day of the week, there there's changing projections, but we are starting to look at what would the impact be to the district if if we do start to see a recessionary environment or what's kind of being called a soft landing? Again, it's sort of the the euphemism for for a mild recession, but at a minimum, the an economic recession would impact our interest revenue, our replacement tax revenue, and possibly our state revenue. And then finally, just moving on to that that longer term, so that five year, five year and five year plus horizon, you know, the the big opportunity there is that that final bond payment, eliminating that portion of that that tax levy, and again, absent any other action, that that reduction gets gets passed directly to our taxpayers, as well as the opportunity to finally close. As well as the opportunity to finally close that bond and interest fund and, and make that one-time transfer of about $2 million for, for an additional one-time use. But again, moving on to the challenges, we, at that time, we, we do expect we'll have limited funding or have fully spent down that capital projects fund. We do see enrollment stabilizing, but potentially the need for some slight FTE reductions. And then the last, last two bullets, just hard to get through, through a presentation without reiterating some of the long-term structural imbalances we see with the, within the state of Illinois. The continuing pressure that, that underfunding pensions has put on the state, state financial condition. And then as well as the potential for unfunded mandates coming from the state or otherwise. So again, looking, trying to look in the crystal ball, it, you know, it's hard to predict, but we do know that, you know, that unfunded mandates unfortunately are always a possibility. Traditionally, at, in Illinois, we've talked about. Freeze, we, we haven't really seen that over the last couple of years. But we, but we're starting to see new unfunded mandates or potential unfunded mandates, what I'd sort of call programming unfunded mandates coming through. Maybe this is, you know, the next generation of unfunded mandates where Deputy Superintendent Akarius discussed a month or two ago when we talked about curriculum, the challenges that unfunded mandates have towards curriculum and as far as long-term planning for our, for our curriculum program and revising curriculum. Well, that, those same challenges to curriculum also, also play into, to the budget as well. Because if we don't know what, what changes we need to implement from a curriculum side, it, it makes it harder to budget for those as well. So with that said, we will continue to update the Board of Education as necessary. Our next discussion item to discuss the budget is scheduled for our, the May 1st Board of Education meeting. My hope is to use that meeting to almost exclusively focus on evidence-based funding. This grant program or, or funding source from the state has been in, in play for five and a half years now. So I think we do have some, some pretty good data to, to really be able to talk about long-term trends and challenges. As mentioned, we are continuing to work on our facility assessment and expect to present that to the, the board in the fall. And then we, I do plan to discuss our tentative 2023-24 budget in a July 2023 Board of Education meeting with the final budget being adopted in August. So with that said, I am available for any questions.
Ms. Fostick.
As usual, I'm in awe of the amount of information you're able to give us, Matt, so thank you for being the steward of that for us. I don't really have any questions, I just want to have one point of clarification. When that capital fund balance is gone, what will we use to fund the 11 to 13 million dollars we need to spend annually to maintain our buildings?
That is the, that is the challenge that, that my office and our administration will be working through as part of the facility assessment over, over the next six months. Again, that, that capital projects fund is, is primarily one-time sources. So once it's gone, it, it's gone and we will, we will be working through what, what some of the other potential sources could be.
Okay, I look forward to it, thank you. Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you, you make, you make this look so, you, you, you're, you communicate it so simply and.
I'm, I'm competing with a, a speech champion, so. I knew I had to bring my A-game tonight, so.
That's right, that's right. Slide 18, I, this is just a comment. So excited to see capital projects fund forecast with no air conditioning. It's so exciting as a board member who kind of came in the middle of, of that whole process. It's, it's very exciting to, to again, to see us having reached that, reached that mark. Slide 13. Quick question, as we look at seeing the FTEs, that reduction for that, those 12 as, you know, SRF ends, are there any ways, what, what particular, and I'm not sure if that's a dual, dual question, but which particular positions do we see those in? Any potential for us to?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can, I can comment first and, and Dr. Tally can, can definitely fill in. But we, when we started, when we received the SRF funds and it feels like a long time ago, I guess it really wasn't that long ago. But we, we made two priorities, the, the first was to reduce K2 class sizes. And, and then the second was to provide other, other support staff positions. I'm thinking we, we provided some community health or community engagement specialists, different support staff in our middle and high school buildings. Our, our commitment was to prioritize funding the K2 class size reduction after SRF expired. And so this, this forecast would keep those smaller class sizes in place, but it, it would reduce that, that second priority or some of those support positions. And, you know, I think we have been upfront with our buildings and with our district leadership that those positions, first of all, that we were going to evaluate them on a year-to-year basis. And so we're fortunate that we were able to fund them all three years we had SRF funding available. But I, I do think we're, again, we've, we've been upfront that those would be the first positions that, that we look to, to reduce if, if, once the funds expired, if, if we were unable to, to fund them. And that looks to be the position we'll be in in fiscal year 25.
Thank you, and then just the last point of just illumination. And I'm certain other board members may have wanted to, to point out this. As we talk about slide nine and, you know, our EBF situation that we find ourselves in, our EAV per student. Just from a standpoint of illumination, can you just share again a little bit of what it means for us from an EBF standpoint and how we receive, how we're funded and what that means and, what that means for our district?
Sure.
And then in comparison.
Yeah, so, again, we're, and I, I think we will have, on, on May 1st, when we really do a deep dive, we'll have enough, we'll have enough data to make everyone's head spin a little bit. But I'll try and, I try and provide the, the, the simple or 30,000-foot view of this. So the state of Illinois as part of the evidence-based funding looks at each district's enrollment and specific characteristics of that district's enrollment. So looks at student demo, not just the, a one enrollment number, but the demographics behind that, the, the needs, the ELL needs, special education needs. ELL, special, special education, low-income needs associated with those demographics. And, and so that's really a target of, okay, that, that's how much resources that, that a district would need to, to properly service those students. It then looks at the local, your ability to, to fund those, those needs locally. So it looks at your EAV or your property value. And, and based on the amount of property value says, okay, you can fund X percent of that, those, those needs or the, that cost. And that's what we refer to as our EBF funding percentage. So for our district, it's, it's 84%. And so that's the state looking at what we have locally. It's looking at what they have historically contributed and said, hey, we're, we're short. We're, we're leaving Indian Prairie short of what they need to adequately fund education for their students. In this case, when they look at, when they do that same calculation for Naperville 203, they come to 119%. And so they say, okay, when Naperville 203 has more than enough local revenues, we've, if anything, we've over-contributed state revenue to District 203. And then based on that EBF percentage and that EBF tier, that's how the state then distributes the incremental increase each year. The, the challenge for us is a tier-two district. There's, there's four tiers, tier-one being the, the lowest or, or neediest districts and then tier-four being the most well-off districts. The challenge for us as a tier-two is we really are kind of stuck in the middle. So the state has recognized, hey, tier-three, tier-four districts, they, they're able to generate substantially all of their, the resources they need locally. And they don't, the state puts almost none, none of the new money towards those districts. But they have, they have all the resources they need, they don't need that additional state, state revenue. But then the state looks at those tier-one districts that are actually below us on the, the funding formula. And that's where the focus has been on that new revenue. So almost 90% of that, that new revenue, or, or again, in this, this year, 350 million number, 90% of that goes to those tier-one districts. And so for, for tier-two, the message at the state level is kind of wait your turn. Or we've got, you're on the list. You know, but, but we have other districts that, that we're prioritizing that funding for. And, and again, in, in full, just kind of in transparency, those are districts that, instead of being at 84%, are at 65% or 67% or 72%. So they are, it's, it's not like they're a little lower than us, it's not like if they're, they're at 80% or 81%. I mean, there, there are still districts that are in that 60 and 70% range that are, that are receiving that, that share of the, the new money.
Matt, thank you so much, this is, is quite a lot. And you always provide us with great information as we look to consider our budget, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carubus.
Staying on to slide nine. I'm just going to ask the, a lot of the questions I asked in my email. It's after nine o'clock, I'm dying off here a little bit. On the EAV difference, you got a nice graph there which shows the, the value. What, how many billions of dollars would 204 need for the EAV? For the operating expense per pupil to be the same as 204? So in the bottom right-hand corner, they, operating expense per pupil for 203 is 16, ours is 13. There's an EAV imbalance on the left, how many more billions would we need to have the $16,000 per pupil spent?
Well, so yeah, so there's, there's two components to it. So to, to match the EAV per pupil with Naperville 203, we would need about 2.4 billion more in EAV in District 203. Just as a reminder, EAV is a third of what you'd call your fair market value or, or what you'd, you'd see on the, the actual market. So that's about 7.2 to 7.5 billion in actual property. So that's what it would take to match the EAV per, per pupil of Naperville 203. If we had that amount, we would likely have a lower tax rate, as well as being able to, to close the gap on that operating expense per pupil number. So yeah, that operating expense per pupil number of, of $2,600, if you, you figure we have about 26,000 students at District 203, that's about, or, excuse me, at District 204, that's about nine, I think 90 to 93 million revenue, actual revenue we're short.
Now, 2.4 billion in EAV is a pretty abstract concept for me. Approximately how many Costcos would 2.4 billion in EAV be?
So the, the Costco that is at Route 59 and 75th Street, and I have, full disclosure, I'm not a Costco shopper. But. That Costco's EAV is, is currently listed at about $5 million. That means, first of all, that means they pay over $250,000 a year in property tax to District 204. But that EAV of 5 million would, again, is about 15 million of, of a fair market or value for that property. Again, if you take 2.4 billion divided by 5 million, I believe you come just short of 500 Costcos.
Okay, now flipping that and looking at the tax rate. We currently have a tax rate of 5.3?
5.31 was our fiscal year, our count, our 21 levy tax rate, yes, not, not shown here.
A board member says 5.3. And 203 has a tax rate of 4.91?
Yes.
How much, assuming we don't have no more Costcos, no more EAV, how much would we need to increase our tax rate so that we spend $16,000 per pupil similar to 203?
So that, that $93 million I, I mentioned earlier is about a 20, would be about a 21% increase in our, our tax rate. I believe that's about 6.2, a, a tax rate of 6.2.
Thank you, swi, moving to slide 16. And I appreciate you going out five years on the projection, I liked that that pulled in the, the bond payments. Obviously, when you were talking about not knowing what CPI is going to do tomorrow, going out five years, certainty gets really low on what the numbers are going to be. What's troubling to me is looking at the local and state revenue over those five years. We have local revenue increasing at a higher rate than state revenue. So even though we should be getting more money because the state is contributing 350 million per year to the evidence-based funding, and those tier-one schools should be coming up into the tier-two, we're still falling behind relative to our local revenue generation. So our local taxpayers are having to bear a greater share than the whole state of Illinois is in supporting this tier-two district. So I think we need to be advocating for greater change at the state level. And you mentioned some additional ideas, stuff that you're doing currently, which is great. Our May presentation, working with local legislatures and our lobbying groups. Our lobbying group, groups aren't entirely aligned with our interests in advocating for tier-two funding. So I think we need to look outside our lobbyist groups. Advocacy with ISBE, advocacy with the governor, governor's office or other tier-two districts that are kind of in the same middle situation that we're in. So sometimes the super attends meetings and speaks out on behalf of generating local revenue. I think we, as a district, as a board, need to figure out ways to advocate for greater state funding. I think the EA, the evidence-based funding formula was a great idea six years ago. But I think we have enough data to say it's not working for us and changes need to get made to the calculations or whatnot to say that the state should be supporting us more than our local taxpayers are. That's it.
Ms. Grover. I actually don't have any questions, but I do like slide 20, 19 to 21, how you did the opportunities and challenges. I think that's really good because it just summarizes everything on why we need what we need.
Mr. Rising.
Slide eight first and then I'll go to slide nine like everybody else did. Slide eight, you mentioned that we may see a shift in tax burden between property types. Is that tax burden going to be a shift, a slight shift from commercial to residential or residential to commercial? Can you, can you just clarify that again and when that will happen? Or when we may see that happen due to the quadrennial reassessment?
Yeah, I thi, I think that's a. I, I think, I think one of the challenges we have, and again, we, we rely on our, our township assessor's office and our, and our counties to really administer the property tax levy on, on our behalf and to assess properties on our behalf. So a lot of times the reports we receive and that, that our team looks at as, as we make recommendations for, for our budgets and our levies are, are just global data or, and, and kind of aggregate the full district. And I, I, I just want to point out that when we talk about that total EAV, we, we do need to look at, well, what percentage of that is commercial versus residential? Ideally, we would have a strong or stronger commercial base that can help offset some of that property tax increase as opposed to our residential. My, in talking with our assessors, and, and again, this is something I work with. My, in talking with our assessors, and again, this is something I work with, my counterparts are out DuPage County, we sort of work with the local assessor's offices. The feeling is that we will see a fairly significant 10% potentially increase in residential EAV in certain parts of DuPage County. But we will not see that same level with commercial properties. And so, to answer your question, that would, as a result, create a situation where a larger percentage of that tax burden is going to the residents versus the commercial properties.
And when do you think they'll see that due to that, this quadrennial?
So, the quadrennial reassessment is occurring in this calendar year. That will be the values that are used for the 23 levy that we adopt this December and that our taxpayers pay in calendar year 24.
Okay, so, and the reason I ask that is I just want to make sure that people understand, as the assessor is doing this quadrennial reassessment, having higher property values is a good thing. But having higher property values can also be a bad thing because you are now paying more taxes. Your percentage, your tax rate, and let's go to slide nine because this kind of segues into slide nine, your tax rate for the district should remain the same other than what we levied for the past year. But because of that higher property value or higher reassessment, residents will see an increase in their taxes. But a lot of that, the majority of that, like you said, does not have to do with us increasing their taxes any more than we normally would levy for CPI. And then, you know, I think we kind of beat this to death, but it is important to reiterate how we are not adequately funded. And, you know, I know we say this a lot, but, you know, it's not us crying poor because I think we are all very proud of how efficient we are, and I would make the argument we're one of the most efficient districts in the state, and we have amazing results. Now, a lot of that again is due to our students and our parents and our staff. But it's frustrating, as a Board of Education member, that now the majority of districts that we have seen that were previously Tier 1, who had less local resources, majority of those districts are now spending more per student than we can. And that's frustrating as a board member. So we have less local revenues than Tier 3 or Tier 4. And now the Tier 1 districts are spending more per student, and the Tier 3 and Tier 4 districts are spending more per student. And I also like to clarify that we live in Illinois. And one of the biggest reasons property taxes are what they are is that, as a whole, Illinois funds public education, one of the worst in the U.S. The reason our property taxes are so high is because Illinois relies on local residential property taxes to pay for public schools. And when you hear myself quite frequently saying Illinois needs to contribute more to public education, it's because if there was more money in public education from the state level and not from the local level, as Mr. Carubus mentioned, we would, and you mentioned, Matt, that we would see a lower residential property tax rate. And so therefore, going back to slide nine, when we receive less in equalized assessed value, you will see higher property tax rates. When you see a higher EAV, you will see lower property tax rates. So it's still out of whack, it's still frustrating. And as Mr. Carubus says, totally on board with you, we need to start advocating more to these legislators and let them know the position that we're in. That's all I had, thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Sorry, Matt, I'm going to stay on this slide just for a little bit, just for me. I just want to make sure I'm clear about that new line that you added on EBF local capacity target. So if my understanding is correct, based on the algorithm for calculating our EBF, we should only be relying on property taxes 65%, but we're relying on it for 75%? Is that correct?
That's, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted that clarification. Let's move to slide number 14. So, I appreciate this chart in kind of showing staff retention versus enrollment changes. Do we gain anything financially with lower enrollment? Like, does that have a positive impact?
Yeah, that's a good question. And this is where, at the, I, it's a very good question. And I will say, I think some of the, to some of the comments that Board Member Rising made earlier, this may be a little counterintuitive towards what occurs in other states or what people may naturally think. So, when you have states that are more dependent on state funding, generally speaking, that state funding increases when you get more enrollment. And so, for example, I'm just thinking of with the pandemic and some shifting demographics, you'll occasionally read a story about XYDC district in California saw a decrease of enrollment, and as a result, they saw a decrease in funding. In Illinois, because we are more reliant on property taxes, we kind of have the inverse where, and I think that's really what's demonstrated here is that property tax revenue is not dependent on that enrollment number. So, we receive the same capability or the same amount of that property tax levy regardless of our enrollment. And that's where having a declining enrollment has benefited us over the past decade or so. But again, that trend may reverse itself in the coming years and as our enrollment stabilizes. If we were more dependent on state funding, again, as a district or across the state, it would allow that relationship to be more intuitive, more okay. It makes sense that a district of declining enrollment receives a little bit less state funding or vice versa. But that, for us, generally speaking, because we're reliant on property taxes and that amount is not enrollment-driven, having those declining enrollments has allowed us to do, has given us a benefit, and that's sort of what's demonstrated here.
Okay, thank you. And you had mentioned how an update from the census report will generate some revenue from us from a federal level. Would that, would the census report impact state funding by any means?
Not likely. So one of the challenges with that federal Title 1 data, and again, we covered this, this was a big part of our story with the ESR funds as well, is it's relying on, it's relying on that U.S. census data. It's not relying on data about students that are in our schools. And so, where we, as a district, feel, and I think correctly, where we feel we got short-changed on the ESR funds is that that census data wasn't necessarily the most accurate. Again, because it was in 2019, and, you know, we did a whole new census in 2020. And again, it doesn't necessarily reflect the poverty or the students that are attending our schools as much as just the general census area. So, the state data, the EBF data, is based specifically on students in our schools. They link, it's coming directly from our student information system, all those low-income numbers and ELL students and special education students. So, they're not relying on that U.S. census data in the same way the federal data does.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, so, good presentation. It is important for us to continue to talk about our financial position. It's very important for the community to know that. And just being a naive person, I read the paper a lot or whatever, and you see the whole discussion about the increased funding in the EBF formula. So when I saw slide 10, I was pretty horrified, actually, because I, in my mind, thought, oh, we're going to get, we're going to get some more this year. And then when I look at this, we're getting less, or, you know, and then in my head, I thought, so I wondered about the categorical payments when you were discussing it in the presentation. As I went through it, I got the understanding in my head, and this might be incorrect, but transportation for us was a difficult negotiation. And we were happy that we had 11% increased target versus the very high number that that started to be. And I thought, well, does this mean that other people downstate got horrible negotiated rates with their transportation? So suddenly, because we were good negotiators, we got less categorical money? That's where my brain went.
That's kind of where my brain goes to. And, you know, I, this was a little humbling for me as well because I, again, I have done this a long time and seen just about everything with the state. But I thought, they're increasing categoricals by 10%, I can at least budget a little bit of an increase. And so that, when the actual came around in September, October, and it was a decrease, it was another one where I had to put my, again, had to, I was taken aback and humbled a little bit. I think in May last year, I think our May presentation, there was a discussion that there was an $87 million error in prior year's EBF, and it was the same thing. You know, naively, even I thought, okay, well, we'll get a couple hundred thousand dollars as a result of that error, and I think we got about 2,000. So, the state of Illinois has always got surprises even for the veterans of us. So, yeah, the, the, to, the direct answer to your question is yes, I think that's what it means. It means that even though we've seen increases, there are districts throughout the state that have seen even higher increases in transportation and some of those other costs.
It's disappointing, and I agree with the comments that we need to be very proactive in pursuing, being vocal in front of our legislatures about this situation and how it's not helping us at all. And we are in a weird position, being a Tier 2 district because Tier 1s are kind of happy and Tier 4 are like, leave me alone. So, you know, looking for widespread support or whatever is probably going to be difficult. But, I don't know, I'm happy also, and repeat this. I think Dr. Tally made a presentation at city council meetings supporting the Block 59 redevelopment and how important that is for our district. And I think all these other things that are coming up are also helpful. I think the new health facility on Route 59 and other changes are things that we need to continue to promote and ask our cities, both on the Aurora side and Naperville side, to pursue to help our district's funding situation. And we won't get 500 Costcos, but we can push for all of those other type of things to happen more frequently in our district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, last topic is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. I know it's late, but Mark, do you want to say a couple words about Lend?
Dr. Tally sent out the slides to Lend. If you have questions, let me know, since I attended with Dr. Tally the Lend meeting. Not too many pressing things coming up right now, but a couple things to keep your eye on, but it's outlined in the slides. I had also previously brought an update to the board of what I was trying to do through IASB with ISB on proficiency to better clarify that. I will summarize and send an email to the board. It's still a work in progress, but I will give you my progress up to date. And I might have a short update on it at our March 20th meeting that I can actually discuss it in public, but in an effort of saving time. And since we're running late, I will save it for then.
All right, thank you. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye, thank you.